We'll get into that. Hold on, we'll get into that. I want to mention this.
Then instead of talking about what Trump, what Trump-
Trump is running. Trump is running. So I am going to talk about what Trump did.
Okay.
He's running. That's not what I'm saying. I'm saying Donald Trump's- Donald Trump's policies didn't show any effect.
Don't vote at all because the president doesn't make a difference to a leftist.
If you're right, white leaner, don't vote because apparently voting's rigged. What is Marxism? I don't think you know what Marxism is.
I think everybody knows what Marxism is at this point. Okay? It's an economic policy, right? Which gets by, I mean, are you talking about economic policy now?
Yeah, because you said Marxism a bunch in the last conversation too.
I'll use leftist.
All right, so as we established before the debate, I'll be asking both of you a question. You'll each have two minutes to state your case. After each of you have stated your position on the subject, we'll move to an open discussion. If I feel that the discussion is gearing off subject, I will bring it back. And once I feel that the arguments are going in circles, I will stop and we will move on to the next question. The first question, this is going to Jovan. You are each voting for different candidates in the 2024 general election. Please state who you will be voting for and your reason why.
Sure. I will be reluctantly voting for Kamala Harris. Mostly because I do not view her as a threat to our democracy. I do view Donald Trump as a threat to our democracy. I view Donald Trump as a threat to our First Amendment right, especially our First Amendment right to protest. I think Donald Trump mishandled his presidency. I believe he was a mostly ineffective leader. He wasn't able to work bipartisanly with Congress and the Senate, even when he held a majority, when he held both Congress and Senate in Republican power. I think his own people don't like him. And I think he would be a disaster to be president again. So as I said, reluctantly, I'm going to vote for Kamala Harris.
Jovan, first of all, it's a pleasure to be here. Well, we haven't met, so I'm looking forward to this. Hopefully, we get to do this again at some point in the future. Excited to talk about these things, right? We are, you and I are neither the two people that are on like national news talking about our opinions. Although you and I might reflect more of what the American people are thinking and feeling in this state than the people that you do see on TV. So I'm happy to do this. Thank God that we have the internet that is providing us with this opportunity where nobody can control. Also, thank God that we don't live in a Marxist government where we wouldn't be able to do this, is my experience. Where if we did, we would both be greeted by police outside the door. But I am, without any reluctance whatsoever, voting for Donald Trump. I disagree that he was a disaster. I think that was the first time in many, many, many years that we haven't had a president to start a war. We haven't had the economic progress that we had while he was president. And as much as Kamala Harris may be a darling to the left right now, Donald Trump is the most moderate Republican that we've elected in decades. Probably even before Reagan, right? From Reagan till today, he's clearly the most moderate one that we've actually had. Me, as a true conservative, I'm happy with him because even though he's not as far to the right as I am, he's the most effective president we've had in decades. We've never had a president in my lifetime that has actually complied with the things that he said he was going to do. And so one of the rare things that he didn't get done was kill ACA. And that was because there was this, the people that you say that don't like him who are on his team, they're not on his team. Those people are not on the Americans' team. They're not on the people's team. Those people are on the state's team, the deep state. And so I don't think that that's a reason not to vote for Donald Trump. Regardless, it looks like Donald Trump's going to be our next president. So it'll be interesting to see how this campaign goes.
All right.
Yeah, okay. Sorry. No, no problem, no problem.
All right, so our two-minute answers are now complete. We'll be moving on to the open discussion regarding this election, who you're voting for, and why other people should vote for the candidate that you are voting for.
Yeah, so I mean, I'll just start with some of the stuff you said. You mentioned Donald Trump was the first president or was a president who didn't start any wars. I would argue it's because we were already in global conflicts already. Russia was already in Ukraine. They invaded Ukraine in 2014. And they attacked the Donbass region while Donald Trump was in charge. He did nothing to stop that. He increased drone strikes in Syria and Yemen both. We were already in that. We were still in the Afghanistan conflict, so we were already in that. So I feel when we say the word, well, we weren't in any war, he didn't start a war. We were still in open conflict all around the globe, and those are just a couple of many that we were involved in. So I just think it's a little untrue to claim that he was, he was, as people on the right tend to, he was a peaceful president. So I would just disagree with that right off the bat. We can talk about economic process, progress, but I don't think Donald Trump really understands the economy in any relevant way. He doesn't understand how tariffs work at all, hence his wanting to put a 200-plus percent tariff on John Deere. His tax, his Tax Cuts and Jobs Act was largely ineffective. His trade war with China cost the US economy 250,000 jobs, as well as caused him to have to bail out agriculture across the country. I think he had to do a $68 billion bailout for farms. So I would just disagree with that. I wouldn't call him a moderate at all. I probably might have called him a moderate like before he got into politics. But I would say now he's definitely as far right as he wants to go. I mean, he's openly said he wants to throw people in jail for a year for burning the American flag, which is already a constitutionally protected version of free speech. He's called for putting homeless people into camps if they don't, with an urban camping ban. Like, I would call all of this like very right-leaning policies. I would disagree that he did what he said. I mean, the ACA, personally, I think him not killing the ACA was a good thing. There was no reason to kill the ACA. But I would, I would say he didn't do almost anything he set out to do except for tax cuts. Everything else sort of fell by the wayside. So I'd say again, like, I just don't see any reason to vote for Donald Trump past he was able to coast off an Obama-era economy. And people keep hyping him up for that when he didn't really do anything.
Wow, well. Let me go from back to front on this, okay? So he got rid of the ACA mandate, which is the most, which was the least liked part of that, right? And it's the thing that made it the most leftist thing that we have had. So the fact that he got rid of the most leftist part of the ACA was a big positive, right? It's the only reason the ACA has survived is because the mandate no longer exists. You talk about free speech, and the left is the enemy of free speech. So I've never seen in the United States the word of so many people like you and I be censored until Kamala Harris's administration, right? They, they, they actually went to Facebook. They asked people to censor it. Zuckerberg admitted it himself. He should be in jail for it. Right after he burns the American flag especially, and I hope that that's a 10-year sentence, not a one-year sentence. And Kamala Harris has proven that she will not protect any person's ability to speak their mind. Farmers, the worst part of the arrangement that Donald Trump had with farmers is the leftist idea that was implanted in farmers, which meant that they were going to be subsidized. So all the things that you're actually saying were bad about Trump's presidency are actually things that were instituted by the left and the remnants of people of putting into, in place, things like subsidized farming, which is a leftist idea, right? And those are all results of economies that are damaged by leftist ideas. It's funny and rich that you say a billionaire doesn't understand the economy, but someone who self-proclaims himself as a Marxist does when we haven't seen a single example of Marxism leading to a positive economic outcome, right? So some people would say China. Let me just cut you off before you, if you're going to say China. The only thing that's not Marxist about China is their economy. And that's the only reason why it's successful. And then lastly, where you began, in 2014, the war started. Donald Trump was elected in 2016, not in 2014. He didn't start the war. My actual statement was that Donald Trump was the first president in decades to not start a war, which he did not. Although he did put Russia's plans to invade Ukraine on hold until he got out of office, and then we had a senile curmudgeon in office which allowed Russia to come in and take the Ukraine. And then he had a plan for Afghanistan exit, right? Where not a single, over the previous 13 months to the exit in Afghanistan, not a single American soldier died on that battleground, a battleground which I know very well, which I lost many friends on, and which I served on myself. And until the 13 that were killed in that mass bombing, in that suicide bombing in Afghanistan, which happened under Joe Biden's turn, which he left billions and billions of dollars of military equipment there that was going to be used against us, which is being sold by our enemies to create funds so that they can fund terrorism throughout the Middle East. So obviously, he's far more peaceful than Joe Biden is. And Kamala Harris, when you talk about these things, Kamala Harris, moving on to Kamala Harris. Kamala Harris is the most dangerous person to run for president, not just because her policies are bad, but because she's an absolute moron. And her lunacy is, makes her far more dangerous than any of her policies, which she doesn't have any. If you were to ask Kamala Harris, Kamala Harris, what do you believe about this? She wouldn't know unless it was whispered into her ear by those fake pearl earrings that she has. So Kamala Harris is a figurehead in an Obama government, Obama-led government. I don't know if you've seen the clips that have come out with Obama talking to Joe Biden. It's very clear who's running this administration. It's Obama and not Kamala Harris. And for me, that's personally offensive that we have somebody running for president who doesn't even make her own decisions. I live with that as a politician today. I live with that all day long. Politicians that are owned by lobbyists, they're the biggest group.
Yeah, so I mean, I'll start bottom to front again. Like, this idea that Kamala Harris is a puppet who doesn't have her own policies. She has many policies. She's openly said them in the middle of a debate with Donald Trump, who deflected and said he had concepts of a, of a plan. Kamala Harris wants to give a tax credit on small businesses of $50,000. She wants to give a tax credit on homeowner loans of $25,000. She wants to expand the child tax credit to $6,000. These are all policies. They're direct policies. And her policies have been analyzed, like, I know she puppets it all the time, but they have been analyzed by Nobel laureate economists who've, who've said that her policies are going to lead to economic growth. So this idea that she doesn't have policies is just so disingenuous because she does. She said them. Whether you like the policies, that's a whole different conversation. But to say she doesn't is, as I just think, inaccurate in like every way. If we want to look at like the equipment left, equipment gets left behind in wars, literally in every single war. So like, it's not shocking to me that equipment got left. But yeah, I agree. Donald Trump didn't start a war because he was engaged in the global conflicts that were already happening in the world. So like, Russia did not invade Ukraine in, under Biden. They invaded Ukraine in 2014. They annexed Crimea in 2014 and attacked the Donbass region in either 2017 or 2018. Donald Trump was president in 2017 and 2018. So yeah, they didn't, they didn't, this idea that they didn't keep pushing Ukraine is just not true. Again, they attacked the Donbass region while Trump was president. So yeah, did he start a war? No, but he was already engaged in global conflicts, right? What, like that, so that's a, that's a nonsense thing to me. You keep mentioning Marxism, but I'm, the way you're using it makes no sense because you said that the only thing that's not, that's not Marxist against, about China is their economy. Marxism is an economic system. That's all it is. If you read either Critique of the Gothi Program, if you read Communist Manifesto, if you read Das Kapital, like, all Marxism is, is a economic system at its core. Like, that's all it is. This idea that Trump is a billionaire, so he's able to understand the economy, I also think is laughable when he has so many businesses that just tanked and went under. Trump Stakes tanked. His university was a scam, and he had to pay out on lawsuits on that. His, his wine didn't do well. His liquor didn't do well. Like, his sneakers didn't sell. He's now doing NFTs and commemorative coins. I've never met a billionaire that needs to sell commemorative coins and NFTs and watches in order to maintain his wealth. Like, I think he's a billionaire. He's failed. He even lost a defamation suit because somebody said that he wasn't a billionaire. He was a millionaire. He sued them for defamation and lost that suit. So this idea that he's a billionaire, I'd just throw that out the, out the gate. Leftist farmer, farmers didn't have leftist ideals. When Trump started a trade war with China, China hit back by tariffing our agricultural trade. China was one of our biggest agricultural traders when it came to like soybeans and products. Because of this, they didn't buy from us anymore, which saw farms tank. And Trump had to bail them out because he ruined them. He ruined those farms. They weren't existing off of government subsidies. They were existing off of doing trade with China. And I do think it's interesting that somebody who, who claims they want free, free trade is for tariffs, which are absolutely government overreach on trade. You're now saying that like, oh, well, we can't have a capitalist system of free trade. We have to have the government. That's super government oversight. So I don't know where we're. And then to want to jail people for 10 years for burning the flag but be caring about censorship also makes no sense. The Facebook censorship thing, Facebook censored misinformation, but we can look directly at the Trump administration doing the same thing when the Twitter files came out. The only, the only administration to ask Twitter to delete something that was not a nude picture of somebody was the Donald Trump administration. In the entirety of the Twitter files, Donald Trump's White House asked them to remove a mean tweet that Chrissy Teigen tweeted. Right? That's the only, only amount of censorship that the Twitter files showed. So I think this idea that Trump isn't also for censorship is just nonsense. He wants to boot every person that believes in Marxism out of the country. He wants to get them out, right? That's censorship. You don't want someone in the country that disagrees with you. It's, it's quite literally censorship. And we can talk about the ACA mandate one more time, but Donald Trump's claim was he was going to remove the ACA. He was going to replace it with something else, and he didn't do that. He, did they get rid of the mandate? Yes, in 2018, they got rid of the mandate, even though most Americans weren't suffering from it anyway because it had an income cap. So yeah, I would just, I would just say he didn't do anything he said he was going to do. So right back to that.
Wow, well.
And feel free, we can, if, we can, we can stop going listless list if we want to dive into one thing specifically, but I'll let you fully respond to all of that.
Yeah, well, Kamala's policies are as fake as her accents. She makes up who she is depending on the room that she's in, to the audience that she's speaking to. She's full of garbage and lies, just like her predecessor. All of her policies that she says, that she believes in, if she's in a room that does not support it, she says that she doesn't. Let's talk about the fact that she was saying very, very, with a full-throated endorsement, that we should be providing sex changes to prisoners in jails with tax money. Well, now she's saying, oh, I didn't say that. Oh, now she's saying I'm going to follow the law, right?
Well, that is, wait, but that is the law. The law is, that is the law.
There's a difference between what the law says and what your beliefs are.
Yeah, I think she believes in the law.
Kamala Harris won't be, really, she believes in the law?
She believes in that law, absolutely.
I doubt that she believes in any law. Do you also believe when she comes here and she talks like a southern belle? No, she's full of shit. That's the bottom line.
We don't have the time to get into code switching, but like, to act like people don't code switch is great.
That's something that everybody in the United States can read, which is why she's polling so poorly. All the policies that she had, she lies about it. She has a record. She lies about her record. She's put more blacks in jail than anybody else running for president by far, which is why she's losing.
That's not true.
She, it's not true. She's the only, she's the only lawyer.
There was a decrease in, from her time as prosecutor.
She put 2,000 black people in jail for weed violations.
She didn't actually. Wait, no, we, no, it's not. No, it's not.
Fact-check it when you get some time.
I can fact-check it right now. I know, I know the facts of that one. She put, she put 1,400.
Ukraine started under Obama. It did not start under Trump. You're, no matter how much you try to argue with it, the fact is that war started there. Trump did not start these wars.
Yeah, but John, I didn't say it did start with Trump.
Also, it started under Obama and in the Ukraine was the massive bribing of the Biden family, okay? The only thing, you said that Trump has tanked all these businesses. Trump is a billionaire today. Trump tanks every loss and turns it into a win. That's why he's winning now, okay? He took whatever you say about whatever business have failed. The fact is, he took a social media, the fact that he was banned on social media, and he created a billion-dollar corporation out of that. Not anybody else does it. I think that he understands the economy. When you can take your negatives and turn them into an economic positive, that's understanding the economy. Bankruptcy is not something that escapes other billionaires, okay? A lot of billionaires have claimed bankruptcy because it's a strategic move, not an economic move. And lastly, I'm not saying that farmers are leftist. Farmers are not leftists. Leftists are the people that had their policies ruin the farmers' lives. And if you look, go back to the 90s with Clinton, right? A lot of Clinton's policies hurt the farmers so bad that they began to exist on subsidies from the government. Today, they're selling farmland to China like crazy. Why? Because farmers don't have the ability to subsist without the subsidies. So that's the problem, and those are all leftist ideas that led to that. In terms of what's misinformation, the fact that the vax is garbage or that masking kids does not protect kids. So I mean, both of those things are pieces of misinformation that were censored by social medias, which are both lies. We both know that the vax is garbage, and we both know that masking kids has never helped a single one.
Yeah, so I just, I, I, I'm noticing that we're constantly doing somewhat aboutisms here. But like, to say Kamala's policies are fake, she's been very consistent with, with the three that I mentioned that you weren't able to say anything about. Because she, she has, she has clearly laid out that she wants to do, to expand the child's tax credit. She's clearly laid out that she wants to do a tax credit for businesses. She's clearly laid out the federal assistance for first-time home buyers. That has been clearly laid out. That has been analyzed by economists.
Why hasn't she done it over the past three and a half years?
Because what can a vice president, vice president's kid don't have policymaking power?
They don't have power. She doesn't have power to do that when she's president regardless.
What do you mean, wait?
What she can do is advocate for it. It never, the words $50,000 for small business never escaped her mouth.
Yes, it did.
It never escaped her mouth.
Yes, it has. She said it in the first debate, in the very first debate.
Why hasn't she done it as vice president?
Because vice presidents do not have policymaking power.
Neither do presidents.
Yes, but when you are a president, you can push through more policies.
You're telling me as the president of the Senate, she can't tell, she can't tell Chuck Schumer?
She's not the president of the Senate. She oversees the Senate.
She's the president of the Senate, and she could say, Chuck Schumer, Chuck, your job, she can vote as the president of the Senate.
Voting, voting and creating it, first of all, the Senate doesn't have budgetary power. The Congress has budgetary power.
But we're not talking about power. We're talking about law, right?
No, these aren't laws. These would be, these would be budgetary policies. This is a budget. This is, this is spending.
Legislature passes laws, right?
These aren't laws.
The House, the President doesn't have any oversight over the House, and they can't decide what's budgeted there.
That's what I'm saying. Her policies are not laws. Because she's going to be the president and she can petition Congress.
I'm going to have these great ideas that I never had as a thief.
Trump is saying the same thing. Trump is going, Trump is going, well, I'm gonna, I have a healthcare plan. But why didn't he do it when he was in power? Why, when he was in office, did he not push through healthcare policies?
That's a great question. Why didn't Trump do some of the things that he said? And here's why.
Any. He didn't do any of the things he said.
He did a ton of the things that he said he was going to do. He started building that wall.
He built 1% of it.
Regardless, 1% is more than 0%.
Why did he tell?
What has Kamala Harris accomplished that's more than 0%? Everything, she's a big zero.
Why did he tell his people to turn down a bill that was going to restart construction on the wall?
Because it also paid for aid to Ukraine, for example.
They all approved aid to Ukraine three months later. They all approved $90 billion to Ukraine three months later.
Well, the point is, don't do it. Don't do it.
But wait, no, clearly, it's not about the aid to Ukraine if they were going to pass that anyway.
That's a manipulation of our government system.
Trump is the one manipulated.
Trump is absolutely not the one that manipulated. Everybody has a vote, right? If you were a congressman and I were a congressman, you have a vote just like I do.
Yes, but they're spineless when it comes to Trump. He surrounded himself with yes-men. He got rid of everybody in his-
The Republicans in the House, the mass, the mass majority of the Republicans in the House are spineless. So are all the Democrats. They're all a bunch of spineless liars. That's, that goes without saying. But here's one thing that they get along with. Here's one thing that they both agree to. Those spineless Republicans and those spineless Democrats, they agree to rebuff Trump in any of the efforts that he, that he makes because they don't want power in the people's hands. What they want is power with the people that they serve, who are the lobbyists on K Street.
Wait, so then how come, how come we, how come they've been able to come together with, with Biden on bills that the Republicans claim they don't like? The infrastructure bill was passed bipartisanly?
Why? Here's why. Because there's billions of dollars at stake. There's billions of dollars at stake, right? But all of the acts that they pass in DC are acts that don't have you or me as a beneficiary. What they have is the, the corporations, right? Because right now, our entire government is run by corporations.
I'm not disagreeing with that, but to act like we're not benefiting directly from the Chips and Science Act is, is, how would we, we would, every single human are human. Every single person in America would benefit from that. We all have phones. We all have computers that take chips. It will make those devices cheaper because we don't have to bring them in.
That's like saying that your health and my health benefit from McDonald's hamburgers. The fact is, this country has a million problems. And those problems are not being addressed in the slightest bit because they provide us with a whole bunch of bullshit, which is like, here's some candy. Here, kids, eat this candy.
Wait, but how is Trump addressing any of these? He's not.
Trump is the only person that has actually instituted policies, right, that has helped. Are you kidding? The entire, how about the economy that didn't benefit corporations that benefit the American citizens?
Except they didn't. When we look at the Tax Cuts and Jobs Act, anybody making between $15,000 to $50,000 only saw an increase in their tax deduction of $229. Yes, it is. When you look, yes, it is. It's 100% true. All you have to do is take the amount on average they were seeing, which was about $2,500, add in the percentage increase that he added. It was about $229 across the board. Meanwhile, people making $100,000 or more got an increase of $14,000. He's not looking out for middle and lower-class America. He doesn't care about them. He's not doing anything and pushing any policy. It's not ridiculous when he's giving so much more money to the people that are making more money.
The bottom line is that we have three and a half years of a record, and then we have four years of Trump as a record. And when you compare those two things, where were the American people better off? And it's clear as day that the American people were better off from 2016 to 2020, even through COVID.
But by what metric?
Well, for example, the people's finances were better. Everyone felt better. This isn't me. Go to some random place in the, in the deepest, darkest parts of any liberal city, and you ask those people, when was your wallet better off? Today?
Yeah, but when we're looking at, when we're looking at whether they're- Wait, but when we're looking at whether the economy is doing better, there's so many other metrics here, right? Inflation is down to where it was.
Inflation is down? Inflation was at 1.5%. It was at 1.5% under Trump.
1.5% isn't, inflation needs to be at 2. The Fed, the Fed regulates inflation at 2, so he can tout a one-point-
So listen, for all you hundreds of thousands of people out there that are watching, I just want you to know that that, the inflation on the eggs that you're seeing is in your imagination.
The inflation on the eggs is because he ruined agriculture.
You're kidding me, right?
He literally had to bail out farms.
You're kidding me.
And then we won't even talk about his deal with Saudi Arabia and Russia to artificially inflate gas prices. He did that in 2020, in his final year in office. He had them raise gas prices.
Donald Trump had somebody raise gas prices.
And we can even talk, the only policy, the only policy that you've mentioned-
So basically, Biden and Kamala Harris are not responsible for anything that's happened over the last three and a half years.
I'll get into Biden and Kamala Harris, but you're-
So let me know how they're, what are they responsible for?
We'll get into that. Hold on, we'll get into that. I want to mention this. Hold on, hold on.
Then instead of talking about what Trump, what Trump-
Trump is running. Trump is running. So I am going to talk about what Trump did. He's running.
So instead of, instead of talking about what Trump did wrong then, right? Because everything that he did, for America, listen, the, the experience that you had from 2016 to 2020 is all in your imagination, okay?
Nothing Trump did would have affected them in 2016. His Tax Cuts and Jobs Act was passed in 2017, didn't go into effect until 2018, and we wouldn't have felt any of the benefits from that until 2019.
It's very clear that somebody that supports Kamala Harris has to push the idea that the president and vice president have no role in the success of our company, of our country.
What are you talking, what are you talking about?
Well, that's the case.
That's not what I'm saying. I'm saying Donald Trump's, Donald Trump's policies didn't show any effect.
Don't vote at all because the president doesn't make a difference to a leftist.
If you're right, white leaner, don't vote because apparently voting's rigged.
If you're a conservative, well, clearly it's rigged. Clearly it's rigged. You know what? Just, I mean, you can pull it up on your phone right now. Everybody can go on their phone, pull it up, find out how many people are on the rolls that we know. There's a, there's a million more people on the rolls in Michigan that there are registered voters right now.
It's all been analyzed by independent auditors. It's all been analyzed by the courts. All been tossed out.
That's why they're saying, right now in Michigan, there's more people, there's more people on the voting rolls than there are registered voters.
I'm going to, I want to ask you, I want to, I want you, I want to ask you, hold on.
In Arizona, there were tens of thousands of people that they knew were not qualified to vote because they had, they, they don't know if they're illegal aliens or not. They're not citizens.
Can you tell me, what did Donald Trump do in his first two years in office, 2017 and 2018, that benefited the economy? Because the Tax Cuts and Jobs Act, we wouldn't have felt any of those benefits till 2019. So Donald Trump, I agree, he oversaw rising economic numbers. But what policies did he put through?
Donald Trump, let's say that Donald Trump took a nap from 2016 to 2019, okay? And didn't touch a thing. Just the name Trump made her economy better than Biden and Harris.
That's such nonsense. All you're saying is he didn't touch Obama's era policies and, and he coasted on Obama's economy.
Are you kidding me?
Guys, we're just, let's get back on topic.
We are on topic.
I, yeah, I, well, we're a little bit, we're into the economy now. I know.
Okay, what's the next topic?
You guys did so well, but we're already at 30 minutes on this question. I want to get to all of our questions today, right? So I want to give you both one opportunity to talk to any undecided voters out there and give two minutes, or up to two minutes, as to why they should vote for the candidate that you are voting for. Let's see, Jovan went first, so we'll have John give his two minutes first, and then we'll go to Jovan.
Okay, so if you're undecided at this point, you have to be somebody who is very, very interested in the future state of our country, right? That's clear. If you're undecided at this point, you're not a political person. You're not a super conservative. You're not a super liberal. You're just somebody who's concerned about the future of the country for the sake of your kids. Chances are, right? And it's like three, four, five, at the very largest 8% of the entire voting population of the United States. And here's the bottom line. You have Kamala Harris that has proven one thing. She has proven one thing, that she is a complete and total idiot. And you have Donald Trump, who has shown one thing, that his instincts are always correct. Now, you and I, as a voter, both know something, as a father, as a student, as an employee, know that somebody who's always right and he always wins is the guy that you want at quarterback. It's that simple. You don't want the fourth scrub string player, okay? Carrying the football with three seconds left on the one-yard line. That's not the guy that you want carrying the- Carrying the football with three seconds left on the one yard line. That's not the guy that you want carrying the football into the end zone. And that's exactly what Kamala Harris is, okay? Kamala Harris is a fake. She's a fraud. You know it. Everybody knows it. We all know those people. We all live with them. We all experience them at work, the people that are fake that will lie to you. We learn about them in school. We have them in our classes. We have them in our daily lives. Some of you are that person, maybe. And the fact is, if you have to lie to get ahead, then you're not able to run this country. Just look at Joe Biden. Joe Biden is a disaster. She lied to the entire country about the president of the United States being a senile old man who can't even control his bowel movement, much less the heavy pull and burden of running this country. So you don't even have an option.
Yeah, I think if you listen to that two minutes, you know who to vote for. Uh, I'm just gonna be completely honest here. We're sitting here saying Donald Trump accomplished things, but again, John, you weren't able to tell me anything he accomplished except the Tax Cuts and Jobs Act, which I, which I clearly pointed out via IRS data, didn't really do much for middle and lower class Americans. We're saying Donald Trump always wins. He lost the 2020 election. He's lost in in criminal court for 34 cases of of fraud. He lost in civil court multiple times. We're saying Donald Trump doesn't lie. He doesn't pay people. Barbara Cochran had to sue him to get him to pay her. Uh, multiple people have to sue him just so he'll pay them. Like Donald Trump is a cheat in the way you talk that like, oh, there's these people hidden without, it's just McCarthyism. We're going back to McCarthyism, which was a a complete clusterfuck. Kamala Harris, I don't think she's the greatest choice. I don't think any of these candidates are the greatest choice. But it's very clear, when I compare her to Donald Trump, that Kamala Harris has a plan. Kamala Harris has policy positions that she wants to put through. Uh, we just went 30 minutes and I didn't hear a single policy position that Donald Trump wants to pass in 2024. And he's not gonna be able to. He can't get people to work for him. Forty of his 44 cabinet members have all disavowed him. The vice pres, his original vice president has disavowed him. Steve Barr disavowed him. Everybody who was on, in his camp said he is, he's quite literally a deranged man. The Jack Smith indictment dropped. 77 witnesses all can account to to the nonsense that he that he's put forth. I think to, I think all he does is he he pontificates, he'll dance for 30 minutes to music, hoping that something, not letting his people leave his rallies. He he's a nonsense candidate. And I think it's very clear that when compared to his economic policy, which is just to increase tariffs to 40% and push the Tax Cuts and Jobs Act versus Kamala Harris's policy, which is to actually divest in middle and lower class America. I think it's pretty clear like which one to vote for.
All right, that's time. So we'll move on to our next question.
Let's drink first, geez. Well, no, I like the, I like the format started because it gives us a basis to like, the two minutes gives us a basis to like, understand the other's position.
All right. Uh, right. So, uh, John, uh, this question goes to you first. You've got two minutes. What is the most pressing issue at the border currently? And what is your ideal solution to solve that problem?
Yeah, the most pressing issue at the southern border right now is, should be one that weighs heavy on the heart of every single American, every single resident of the United States, which is human trafficking. Human trafficking has been a horror. It's a horror here in Florida. Florida has a high number of human trafficking incidents. We have the southern border, which is completely open. You have people coming from prisons and other countries. We have those people coming from prisons in Venezuela, making it all the way to the Midwest, taking over apartment buildings. It's a travesty. They're saying up to more than 21 million people have illegally crossed the border. And the American people, we can say, oh, that doesn't exist, but the fact is, we know it does. We feel it. We feel it. I was in Home Depot the other day. I asked somebody, hey, can you help me find this? And they're like, I don't speak English. And thank God I speak Spanish. So I spoke to them in Spanish. I said, hey, can you help me find this and whatever? I could hear their accent that they were from Venezuela and I asked them, hey, so, you know, are you ever from Venezuela? Yes, I'm from Venezuela. How did you get here? Oh, well, you know, I came here without paper. I had to do this. I had to apply this. This person had a easier time coming here illegally than people who have spent their lives trying to get their citizenship through legal ways. And that, again, is a travesty. It's basically discounting everybody who's worked in the American system to do things correctly. And then forsaking them for the sake of a, somebody who was in a prison in Venezuela to get here on top of them and cut them in line. And then victimize the American people on top of it. It's horrendous. And this is all while we have tens of thousands of missing kids. We have thousands of people that are, uh, separated, their family separated. We have people abusing the American system. It is an absolute horror show. And that horror show was nothing less than the rescindence of almost 100 policies by the Trump administration, which had only a trickle of illegal immigration coming in. And now it's the Niagara Falls of immigration. They're literally, you, now you have to question, what's the intention behind this illegal immigration? And we know what it is. It's to create more votes in the House than the next census. That's the only reason they're doing this. They're trying, the Democratic Party is selling the soul of the country so that they can hold on to seats in the House. And and I think that they should all be tried and they should all be put in jail for that.
Jovan, same question.
Yeah, cool. I think, uh, I think what what John very brilliantly demonstrated is what I hear from the right constantly when it comes to the border. It's no factual information. It's a bunch of headlines, a bunch of misquotes, a bunch of incorrect numbers. We'll start with with human trafficking. Human trafficking is an issue. I don't disagree with this. I think we engage in legal human trafficking all the time through like the adoption system. I think we engage in, uh, I think, uh, human trafficking is also a big problem when it comes to European American travels. So this idea that the southern border is, this is the only place we have to focus on that, I just disagree. Southern border is not open. And people keep saying this, it's open. It's not open. You can't just cross the southern border and immigrate into this country. If it was open, nobody would be illegally crossing it. It's fully closed. Uh, the the apartment buildings thing, the chief of police there said that out of the 10 people that took over an apartment, only three were even associated with Venezuela, right? So so again, it's just more, and when we look at people crossing the border, the Department of Homeland Security, the people who measure this stuff, say that Biden has only, Biden administration only saw 2.8 million per year that came across. So when people say we have this 20 million number, that's taking into account people that were here when Trump was in office. It's taking account people that were here when Obama was in office. Biden didn't see 20 million illegal immigrants come into the country. It's just not true numbers. We can talk about the missing kids. The missing kids were were, uh, aren't missing per se. We just don't know, like they were given to family members, right? And then they just haven't contacted back, uh, uh, the, uh, administration. Like when, when, what happens is usually these kids will, we will call them and say, hey, we're, we wanna know your, your, uh, status and the kids don't answer. They don't answer the phone. And then family separation, like we didn't see that under Trump and exponential numbers. We literally saw children in cages. So I I just think it's.
You're talking about Obama or Trump?
Uh, guys, real quick, uh, Jovan, if you wanna give your answer to the question now, we'll cut it.
Oh, that was my answer. My answer to the question is there is no crisis. That's my answer to the question. Sorry, sorry.
Okay, can you just state, yeah, can you just give that answer for us?
My apologies. The border crisis is an artificially inflated crisis. There is no crisis at the border. All it is is is, uh, businesses in America destabilizing, uh, specifically central and Latin American countries. And then having people come over here so they can engage in cheap, close to slave labor. Because they, there are jobs that American citizens just won't do and they wanna fill those jobs as cheaply as possible. I believe that this situation is inflated. My bad, I didn't answer the question.
Well, the aborty, the border authorities completely disagree with your statement. And 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 that's why the chief of the border police has already said, that's why the 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 union for all these border cops has endorsed Trump. They know that all these kids, they talk about it. We can say that these are, oh, well, that's just a, you know, that's a single person. That's a thing. There's tons and tons, thousands, thousands of cases where kids are being murdered, raped. People are being absolutely abused in the thing. To to say that that's not a travesty, what's going on there is is just an unrealistic, now we're just trying to feel.
I didn't say it wasn't a travesty. I said there was no crisis.
If there's, what's the travesty if there's no crisis?
I think the travesty is is the exploitation of migrant people.
Okay, I agree. I agree. That's a travesty.
Not the, not the, in the, uh, what the right says, which is they're coming in and taking your jobs. They're coming in.
Oh, okay, so.
That's, that's, that does not happen.
Okay, so then that, them coming here is not the travesty, but them being to exploit it at the border is a travesty. I agree with you on that portion. I think it is a travesty. What's happening, listen, there's a human beings. I've seen children, let me tell you a quick story. In Afghanistan, I was traveling on a convoy, okay? We were almost passed by a convoy, which we didn't know. We almost shot up this convoy that was trying to pass us. Then somebody, thank God, realized that it was a wedding convoy. They let them pass, okay? So they let them pass. They go on. A few miles down the road, we caught up with them and they had hid an IED that was obviously aimed for us. I had literally had to pick up a shoe, a baby shoe with a foot in it there. A child has no nationality. There's no sentiment for the killing of a child. Every human being knows the pain of loss. It's a human travesty and that travesty is happening because that border is opening. They're encouraging people. My family's from Nicaragua. I still have a house there. We know that they're encouraging people from Nicaragua. The the president of Nicaragua, Daniel Ortega, has allowed people to get out of prison if they're willing to make the traverse all the way to the southern border of the United States and come in here illegally. If you are mentally ill, they'll let you out as long as you walk your ass all the way to the southern border of the United States and come here illegally. That is happening. That is not fake. That is true. And whether it's one or it's 500, it's happening because we have a president right now who has no marbles left in that brain.
This, this current administration decreased immigration from Nicaragua by 250,000 people.
The ones that are coming here, that's not, that's not because of, that's not because of the United States policy. That's because of Nicaragua, okay? That's because of Nicaragua. And the people that they're allowing to come are the, the Nicaragua is choosing who can come and who cannot come.
How do we know that, first of all, we're, this, this claim that like they're sending prisoners, like, how do we know these people are undocumented? We don't know who they are, most of them. How, but we know that they're all bad people? They're all criminals?
When you catch them, okay, they investigate and they find out who they are.
Yeah, and the bulk of people coming over here aren't even coming from the southern border.
But you sound like, you sound like rabbits who said, oh, it's only a handful of apartments that were taken over by Venezuelan gangs, not a whole bunch.
No, because it wasn't Venezuelan gangs. They found three people with connections to Venezuela. Three. That's not Venezuelan gangs taking over an apartment.
Three people, three illegal aliens from Venezuela who took over an apartment in the United States.
That means there were seven US citizens.
Okay, we don't know that they're United States citizens.
They didn't say they were, they were undocumented immigrants. They did not make that claim.
There's three illegal aliens. You have, listen, you got, even, even the gangs in Chicago are disagreeing with you. They're saying that these Venezuelan gangs are taking over. So I don't know who has credibility with you or not.
We're putting stock now into like what gang members are are claiming is happening?
Well, you put stock in what Biden says and he's a gang, he's essentially a sophisticated gangster.
The president of the United States. Yeah, I'm gonna put a bit more stock into what the president of the United States says.
Really? I, you know what? I guarantee you that a gang member in Chicago has more mental faculties than the president of the United States right now. And that's also a travesty.
Who cares about the mental faculties? This is a pivot.
Who cares about the mental?
It's just a pivot from what we were just talking about.
No, that's not a pivot.
Yes, it is. We're talking about, we're talking about who we would believe. The president is briefed by multiple agencies.
So according to your numbers, let's get back to what we were talking about then. You said that it wasn't 21 million people that came across the border. You said it was only a few mil, 2.8 per year. Okay, so only 12 million people have come in.
As of last, as of 2023.
12 million people have come here.
As of 2023, the number was 8 million. We don't know who's, we don't know how many are in 2024.
You said 12. You said 2.8 per year, times three, that's 12, right? That's 12 at the, at the end of this cycle. At the end of this election cycle, that would be 12. So the point is that 12 million people, you said that the travesty was that these people are being exploited by government, by companies here in the United States. Well, that's 12 million people. That's a travesty. That is, that is a full scale exploitation of 12 million people, even if it's to come here to get a job. Those people coming here for economic prosperity, they're not being exploited in their minds. We might be exploiting them because we're using them for that purpose, but they don't think that they're, to them in their mind, they're making a contract. It has to do with everything.
So many people can be exploited without realizing they're being exploited.
I agree, but you said it was a travesty and we're talking about the number. If it's not 20, it's 12. For me, it's $12 million. And that's a travesty that Biden Harris created that was unnecessary.
With what though? What did Biden and Harris do? What specific, give specifics. What did they do to increase the?
Hold on, and then they rescinded 96 policies of the Trump administration.
Which ones?
Every single policy except for one, okay? For example, they didn't make them stay in Mexico.
Yes, the Remain in Mexico policy has been criticized by multiple human rights organizations. Well, if you're gonna sit here and say that you care about the.
It was keeping them out of the United States.
Wait, so then this is completely antithetical to what you said. If you're gonna say that you care that they're being trafficked at the border, you care that their children are being injured at the border. If you're gonna care about all of this, but you don't care when human rights groups say, hey, the Remain in Mexico policy is opening up them up to more violence.
Okay, so you're talking about more Marxist groups that are saying, oh, let them into your country because you guys are being racist.
What is Marxism? I don't think you know what Marxism is.
I think everybody knows what Marxism is at this point, okay? It's an economic policy, right? Which gets by, I mean, are you talking about economic policy now?
Well, yeah, because you've said, you said Marxism a bunch in the last conversation too.
I'll use leftist, okay?
Leftism is Marxism. Leftism is is just Marxism.
So what do you want me to use to describe your political, your ideologies?
I'm fine with you describing my political ideology, but I don't think you know what it is.
What word do you want me to use?
I don't think you know what the word you're using means.
Let's use bullshit then, because that's more likely to, a fair, fair description.
If you don't wanna answer the question, that's fine. I think it just shows you don't know what Marxism means.
Bullshit ideologies, okay, that you're talking about, you're talking about 30 kids, 30,000 kids missing? I mean, it's just 30,000 kids that are missing. I mean, seriously?
No, again, that's not what I said. So.
Okay, what was it that you said?
I said that we, we know who the kids were given to. They were given to, they were given to guardians.
Okay, so we just left them. We don't know where they're. They're missing. 30,000 kids.
They aren't answering the phone when we call and check on them.
So 30,000 kids aren't missing. We just don't know where they are. That's a typical bullshit kind of excuse on not doing our jobs.
No, they, they, most likely, they're not answering because they don't want to go through the process. They don't wanna have to deal with the possibility.
But we don't know who they are.
Yes, we do know who they are.
We know where they are.
We know who they were, we know which, which of their relatives and or guardians they were given to.
We can't track them down.
Not if they leave and won't answer their phone. How are we gonna try, what do you, what do you expect us to do? Go Jason Bourne to find these kids?
I think that I'm gonna leave, I'm gonna let you have the last word on that because I think it's so ridiculous that the people understand that that's a lack of policy, which you are sounding like a pretty good, like a pretty good.
What policy could we implement that would correct this? Like specific?
How about, you don't let them, you don't take responsibility if you can't resolve the problem.
What do we, what do we, these were unaccompanied children?
Don't let them come, right?
So what do we do? We send them unaccompanied back?
What do you mean? If if you close the border, listen, if you close the border, if you close the border, no, they're coming here because they know we'll let them in. And they're selling their kids.
What do we do with them? What do we do with them? If if a child shows up at the border, no parents.
So you send them with a stranger.
They're not strangers.
They're not proving, they're not proving that they're family members. They're not proving that they're family members. This is just a statement.
The kids aren't gonna say, I don't know who this person is?
Are you serious? This is, this, you know what? This is, this is a, this is a conversation.
It's just speculation on your part.
This is intellect, no, the speculation is, okay, it's okay for you and I to speculate today. But it's not okay for the government to speculate when they hand the child off to somebody who they're speculating is their family member. There's no proof.
You're speculating that they're sending them to somebody with no proof. You're speculating that.
I'm speculating the government doesn't know where they are.
Because they won't pick up the phone.
Oh, they won't pick up the.
This is time and time again.
Oh, well.
If they show up at the house and they're not there, if they call them and they don't answer, what should they do?
Let me wrap it up with this then.
You haven't been able to tell us what policy we should pass to stop this from happening.
I'm gonna suggest a policy really quick. But first, let me say, okay, so then you know, if you elect Harris, basically what you're saying is, we can't do anything about it and you're shrugging it off. And at the tulip tunes of tens of thousands of kids being trafficked across the country, we're speculating that are their, who are their family members. We don't know, because a lot of those kids have been confirmed to have been sexually trafficked, okay? But we don't know. We can't, just shrug it off. 30,000 kids, there's nothing that we can do about it. Here's a policy. Close the border. Let them know that if they make that giant trek to the United States, that they're not gonna get into the United States and then they won't leave their countries.
So this is, all, all you've confirmed to me, all you've confirmed to me is you don't actually care what happens to the children. You just don't want them on American soil. So they could show up at the border unaccompanied.
Are you telling me that they're better off being sexually trafficked here in the United States instead of being in Nicaragua with their families?
That is such a disingenuous response. I'm gonna, I'm gonna finish my answer. They're coming across unaccompanied. They show up at the border unaccompanied. And your response instead of, well, let's take them in and try to help them because as many of them that we can't contact, we, there are still tons of them that we can. So your response is, let's do nothing and send them back by themselves and hope they can just get their, find their way back, children. As as opposed to actually helping these children. There's tons of policies we can put in place when they get here. And I agree that the, that, uh, Biden isn't perfect at the border, Harris won't be perfect at the border, Trump wasn't, no president is gonna be perfect at the border. But to say that we should just, to say that we should just push.
And Trump is better at the border and the United States knows that.
All Trump wants to do is send them back.
The United States, the people of the United States in the polls, national polls have already demonstrated that they know who's better at the border. This is a losing argument for Harris.
The only person that has been able to significantly show progress at the border and not just progress as in I stopped people from coming.
Hold on, you're gonna say something that's gonna, that's gonna make me lose my mind, what?
No, I'm not. Biden, Biden put, Biden put Harris in charge of the Northern Triangle. She was in charge of.
What a horrendous idea that was.
She lowered immigration from the Northern Triangle by 25,000 specifically by partnering with the president in Honduras to create jobs in Honduras.
12 million people. 12, according to your number, I say it's twice that many. You're saying 12 million.
You don't even wanna hear it. You don't even wanna hear it because you know it breaks your argument.
No, it doesn't, because it's untrue. I think the entire country knows that already.
Honduras has said it's true. The president of Honduras has commended Kamala Harris for her, for her, uh, help with him. The the jobs that have been created in Honduras saw a net decrease in immigration. This all happened. And you can laugh it away, but like the Department of Homeland Security acknowledges that the immigrants coming from the Northern Triangle decreased when Kamala Harris stepped in by 250,000. So I say, if she's able to do this, because what she recognized was that it's not about securing our border.
She hasn't even gone to the border. She went to the border once. She's gone, in four years, she went, went to the border for a photo op.
So she went to the border.
And she didn't even go to the actual border.
So she did go to the border.
Once, in four years, she's the borders czar.
Do you know where she did go? To the Northern Triangle countries. To the Northern Triangle countries, she went to the Northern Triangle countries and we saw a decrease because she recognized that it's not about just locking up the border, it's about these countries that have been economically destroyed economically. I don't disagree that they want people to come here, but it's the Republicans, the Republicans, Democrats both want people to come here so they have cheap slave labor.
Okay, let's say that's true, I'm not even gonna argue that point, okay?
Let me give John the last word on, on this and then we're gonna move on.
Okay, do the Democrats want illegal aliens to come to the United States, yes or no?
Probably.
Okay. I agree completely, they do.
So do the Republicans.
All right, so before we move on to the next question, I just wanna give Jevon the opportunity to, um, to define Marxism, just so that, that it's clear, it's on the record and, and we're not bumping into that question while we're in a different subject.
Sure. Marxism is just the economic principles of Karl Marx and Friedrich Engels, which dictates that the means of production be granted to the working class. That's it.
Means of production and ownership.
The, the means of production would be the ownership. It calls for the abolition of bourgeois private property, which would be the means of production.
All right, so moving on to the next question, uh, this is gonna go to Jevon first. Are sex and gender mutually inclusive or mutually exclusive? Two minutes.
Neither, uh, sex and gender are interlinked, but they wouldn't be exclusive of each other and they wouldn't be like inclusive of each other. They just have a, a linking in our neurobiology.
Uh, so maybe a different way I can ask this question is, is sex and gender the same thing or are they different things?
No, they're two different things that are interlinked. One has to do with your, the biological makeup of your sexual reproductive system, which would be sex. The other has to do with your, uh, gender identity, which is going to be a complex neurobiological, uh, uh, interlinking between society and, uh, your own mind.
All right, uh, John, same question, is sex and gender describing the same thing?
Well, I, I mean, I, I detest the phrasing of the question already, even the question is confusing. And, and the last thing that the mental ill people who are having this struggle need is to have a question which is just as confusing as their situations and circumstances. Gender, gender identity, sex, all that, listen, this is BS. You're, you're a man or you're a woman? If you are a man, right, or a woman that does not have some kind of, uh, irregularity biologically or mentally, then your gender identity matches your sex. If you have an abnormality, okay, then your gender is up for debate, right? And it's up for debate in the demons of your mind. It's not up for debate to the rest of the world. At least, at least, policy-wise, it should not be, although in some states it is. So that's a question and a, and a, and an agenda that has no other purpose than to confuse the American people and distract them from the realities of the world, which allows the people who are robbing us blind, which is these huge, you know, in my opinion, BlackRock, Vanguard and so on, from having control of our government. Because we're arguing about stupidities like whether you know what bathroom to use or not.
Yeah, I, I mean, I think it's clear that John doesn't know the, the relevant science on this. Uh, I study the neuroscience on this constantly, it's one of the things I consistently talk about. Uh, he can claim they're mentally ill, but the ACA, the American, uh, not the ACA, I'm sorry, the, uh, uh, American Psychological Association, the APA, has already determined time and time again that having gender non, uh, incongruence is not any way remotely related to a mental illness, uh, it doesn't, it's not caused by mental illness, it's, none of this is, is true.
When did that happen though? When did the APA make that change from saying, in 2012? Okay, so from 2012 to the beginning of time.
Before you even get there, the change was made with, uh, anti-trans psychologists as well. The, the DSM-5 specifically.
The DSM-5 changed when?
Well, it changed all the time.
All right, it changes every, every year, they come up with a new DSM-5.
Do you think being gay is a mental illness?
Here's what I think about the entire situation, I'm gonna answer that question.
Being gay was labeled a mental illness in the DSM, I think it was the DSM-3 or the DSM-2.
Let me, let me answer because I wanna, I think that this is a super important discussion which should be based in science and compassion, not in politics. And here's why.
How can you say compassion when you called them demons, you called them mentally ill?
I didn't call them demons, I said, no, I didn't, I said the demons in your mind.
Okay.
I said the demons in your mind, you have demons in your mind and so do I.
I don't have demons in my mind.
Believe me, everybody does and everybody struggles with them. And if you, if you don't acknowledge it, then people are gonna find it very hard to see everything else that you say is credible. Because we all struggle with, if I use the figurative word demon, okay, use whatever you like. But everybody has issues and challenges mentally, emotionally that they struggle with, that's a part of humanity. It's the one thing that binds every single human. So the fact is that if you are straight, fine, everything worked out, you walked out, right? You walked out of the factory, everything is fine, you checked out. If you're gay, okay, then it's either one of two things, you walked out perfectly fine, right? And then at some point you made a choice. I'm not labeling it bad or good or anything, I'm just saying at some point you made a choice. If you were born, hold on, hold on, I'm gonna, I'm just playing, I said one or the other. I said, or you walk out of the factory and you're perfectly fine, or in the factory, something happened that changed and it becomes an abnormality, clearly.
But is it a choice, you used the word choice specifically?
I'm telling you, it's one or the, I don't say, I'm not saying it's absolutely, I'm saying it's either a choice or you were born that way, you came out of the factory like that, one or the other.
Can you answer my, my question, do you think being gay is meant, is a mental illness?
I don't think it's a mental illness, I think it's abnormality, I don't know if it's mental or physical.
So then you recognize that when, that when like the DSM-5 is updated to clarify that things we might have originally seen as like mental illnesses or mental disorders, to remove them from that category, that's not a bad thing. So the DSM-5 being updated is irrelevant to whether gender, gender incongruence is a mental illness.
Asking the question and then you're answering the question yourself, but let me, let me answer the question that you posed to me. I believe that when the DSM-5 is changed for political purposes, it's wrong. I think that when it's changed because they've made an observation and they've come to a scientific conclusion that it should be changed, it's okay. I'm not a scientist, I don't know.
Great, well then they, they updated the DSM-5 because they made observations.
For political reasons, not because of their observations.
Then why are staunchly anti-trans psychologists signing off on the current DSM-5?
All right, so hold on, so let me, let me go back to that, let me go back to the thought of whether gays is a choice or a thing. And it's the same with trans, right? So you either come out of the factory, you're perfectly fine, you make the choice to be gay or trans or whatever, for whatever reason. Okay, for whatever reason, it could be, uh, as a result of abuse or whatever, whatever the reasons are that lead to that, it's possible.
It's not.
You're saying it's not possible that you make the choice.
Evidence of this.
You're saying that it's not possible for somebody to choose to be trans?
Why would somebody choose to, to have?
Why does somebody rob a bank?
No, but why would somebody choose a gender identity being ostracized by half of the country?
I'll, I'll tell you, let me tell you an embarrassing story about my child, okay? So I have a daughter, I have five kids, but I, one of my daughters, she, when she got to middle school, you know, middle school's a shitty age for everybody, right? So when she got to middle school, she went to school and she actually spoke with the accent that, uh, what's her name? What's the actress's name from, uh, Cat, uh, uh, famous singer, geez, somebody throw her, throw her some. So Ariana Grande, you know how she spoke in that show Cat and what else, the other cat and whatever? Okay, she spoke like that at school, for whatever reason, she, she didn't plan it. She went there and somebody said, oh, your voice sounds like Cat from so-and-so. And then she started to try to speak like her because she said that. Why the hell would somebody do that? My daughter's beautiful, she's intelligent, she has no reason to pretend she's somebody she's not, but she did for a couple of weeks, right? Why do people do that? People have pressures, emotional, mental pressures that affect them all differently. Why does somebody abuse their child? That's a far harder decision, how is it that you do, that you hurt something, somebody that you love? It's the same thing, people hurt themselves, why do you cut themselves?
These aren't analogists, analogous in any way.
You said, why do they do that, but you can't answer any of the questions of the mind like that.
First of all, first of all, I can't answer why somebody cuts themselves, it's because they typically have depression and a way for them to ignore.
That's the same reason that people, people go trans, that's a lot of the reason.
No, again, the ACA doesn't find any linking between gender incongruence and mental illness, but the reason APA.
They say that a lot of them commit suicide.
They, yeah, but when you look at, but have you looked at the studies for why? The why is given in every, no, the why given in every study on trans suicide is because of societal and familial ostracization. In every single study, you're not gonna find a single one. And we know that through gender, uh, gender, uh, affirming care, the suicidality rate drops by 70%.
You mean castrating kids?
That's been castrated.
Really, you're not gonna find a single child that has been chemically castrated?
You're not gonna find, chemically castrated is a nonsense phrase when it comes, yes.
What do you use to castrate a child?
What happens when you go off of HRT?
What happens?
Arm is not HRT, it's Lupron Depot, because Lupron Depot PED is one of the most used, uh.
Okay, so, and what is that, what is that?
It's a pubertal suppressant.
Okay, which is what?
Suppresses puberty.
And how does, how does it go into the body?
Uh, there's multiple ways, I think patches, pills.
And how do they make it?
Lupron Depot PED, what do, I don't, I don't know how they make drugs, I'm not a pharmacist, I don't know how they make drugs.
It's a pharmacist, and what do pharmacists do?
Give you drugs.
They mix chemicals, so it's chemically castration, it castrates you.
Everything is chemicals, when they make, when they make food for us, they're mixing chemicals, so it's just.
That's right, and it's just as dangerous, the bullshit that we're eating is the same bullshit that they're giving kids to chemically castrate them.
That dihydrogen monoxide is bad, what are you talking about? Like this is, this is, this is a, this is a nothing burger.
Chemically castrating a child.
No, because what happens, what happens, what happens, first of all, castration has to be permanent. And what happens when they go off of Lupron Depot, they regain, they restart.
A lot of these kids are completely damaged.
We have 50 years of data on Lupron Depot PED, it started, no, no, no.
What about cutting the breasts off of teenage girls?
We do that, we do that for cisgender girls.
For what?
If their breasts are too large and they don't want them that large, we'll give them breast augmentation, we do it all the time.
Hold on, so, and when, are you kidding me?
A 15-year-old or a 16-year-old getting breast augmentation is, it's nothing to me, it, it's nothing, where's the, you have to show some level of principal harm and you can't do that.
Principal harm?
Yes, show the harm.
Your breasts off, so that when you change your mind after the devils have worn off and you go and you decide you wanna breastfeed your child? You're just like, oh, man, I can't breastfeed my child anymore because some stupid asshole allowed me to cut my breasts off when I was 13.
Yeah, so, uh, so first of all, uh, when it comes to breast augmentation, like, like, uh, top surgery.
That's not augmentation, that's cutting them off.
That's augmentation.
That's cutting them off.
That is augmentation.
Okay, you can use whatever word you want.
Are you augmenting the breasts?
You're cutting your breasts off.
When you have top surgery, top surgery is done typically between 15 and 16.
And what about genital mutilation, that's okay too, right?
18 is the, the age, if you're going, especially if you're going through insurance, you have to be 18.
And God forbid, yeah, so it's an insurance issue whether you cut your genitals off.
Well, yeah, we can't tell private citizens what they, what their private doctors can do if they're not paying through insurance.
Complains about you because they wanna cut their genitals off and you don't provide them that gender-affirming care, then they can take your kids away.
I don't think you know what gender-affirming care is, you keep going back to this like surgery thing, when the bulk of gender-affirming care, the bulk of gender-affirming care happening for people under the age of 18 is social gender-affirming care. I think it's like 80% of gender-affirming care for people under 18 is social, it's social. A con for what, what's the purpose, what's the purpose?
It's a con, it's a con to help people who are mentally unstable abuse themselves for profit.
Then why does, then why does after, after gender-affirming care, why does suicidality drop by 70% and why does depression drop by 40%?
I doubt that that's the case, I'd love to see the studies on that.
I'll show them to you when we get done, I have, I have litnes of them. And we even know that when it comes to children, uh, when it comes to children undergoing gender-affirming care, even in longitudinal studies, they don't regret their decision.
I think that's completely false.
You can think it's false, but the data says otherwise. If, here's what I'm gonna say, if all of these things show this mass amount of harm, where's all the studies from the other side? The right doesn't have any. I've looked, I've looked time and time again, I've asked every person I've talked to on this, provide me a counter study and they don't exist.
Okay, do you remember that show, the, uh, what's the, with the suitcases, Who Wants to be a Millionaire, right? And one of the things you get to, one of the hints you get to use is to ask the audience for their input, right? Ask the audience, and there, there's this like, this sense or an understanding that most people have that the, the, there is what wisdom in, in the group, right? Like there's this group of wisdom and all of them together, this, this, this group intelligence has more power than a, than an individual's intelligence. I think that the entire country looks at us, chemically castrating kids, genital mutilation, cutting the breasts off of teenage girls, and they know that it's wrong.
Yeah, I think you, I think you use loaded language like that because you don't have anything to back up.
I'm just using factual languages and people, people love, yeah.
Because castration is permanent and they are not permanently being castrated.
They're permanently harmed by the chemicals that we're putting into their bodies.
Show me evidence of this, show me the evidence of the permanent harm, right? I can provide you evidence of what happens when they go through gender-affirming care, I can provide you the evidence of the, of the regret rate, of the, the decrease in suicidality, of the, the positive outcomes, but you can't show me the evidence of the negative outcomes.
Because, listen, I didn't get the questions to the show until just prior to us coming here. If I knew that we were gonna be debating that, then I would come with evidence for that. But I think that the entire country, as I said, has already acknowledged that this is wrong, they all know in their stomachs that this is wrong.
Real quick, I just wanna point out, I don't know all of this information because I saw the questions ahead of time. I know this information because I talk about this topic constantly, so I just know this stuff off the top of my head.
I don't, because I know it's wrong, I don't need to study to know that something's wrong. Just like robbing someone or killing someone is wrong.
How we can say the phrase, I don't need to study something to know it's wrong, I think that shows the dichotomy here between the left and the right.
Study whether murder was wrong? You needed to study, you needed to see a study to know that murder is wrong?
Well, yeah, not see a study, but we would need to know what, the killing that happened was justified to know if murder was wrong. All murder is, is it a justified killing or not? So we do this all the time, in self-defense cases, we have to study whether or not it was justified, so yes, sometimes you do.
No, I didn't say killing, I said murder.
Murder is an, yes, the definition of murder is unjustified killing, but who discerns an unjustified killing?
Okay, well, let's say it's you determine that it's an unjustified killing, do you need a study to know that that's wrong?
To know if an unjustified killing is wrong?
Yeah.
No, but I think that's a vastly different thing than what we're talking about here.
It's not, because you're murdering the future of these kids.
You aren't though, if you were murdering the future of these kids, we wouldn't have children that have gone through gender-affirming care who are upwards in their 30s and 40s now.
I think in 10 years, this is gonna be a horrific memory that is gonna be viewed at like Nazi scientists.
Okay, so. Sure, real quick, real quick before that, I just wanna say, if in 10 years, there are still no negative outcomes, I want us to come back to this table and you admit that there were no negative outcomes.
Listen, I, I honest, I'll be honest with you, I could give a shit what society says about it in 10 years. I'm just saying that in 10 years, I doubt that the country will still be practicing this voodoo medicine. And that if that's the case, then we can come back and talk about it in 10 years and think, fuck, that was really terrible what we've been doing to these kids.
Yeah, uh, I think it's clear that when it comes to the science of gender, when it comes to the science around sex, the right just tend to not know what they're talking about, they don't actually research any of this. Like I study neurobiology textbooks, I study all of these things. I think it's clear that they just want to gatekeep gender because they believe you're harming children, even though there's no principal harm being showed by any of this, that's, that's my 30 second date.
All right, um, so we're gonna move on to the last and final question.
What's our, what's our total time?
Well, right now it's 6:25, when do you wanna? Can you give us 20? All right, so we got 20 minutes for this topic?
I have no stop point, so I'm fine, as long as we need. Yeah, I'm good.
And, uh, whose, whose turn is it to go first, I lost track? John's, all right, so John's question goes. All right, John, this question goes, uh, to you first. Uh, should abortion be regulated by federal law or should it remain strictly in each state's purview?
I mean, I think that the Constitution is pretty clear that anything that is not enumerated in the, um, in the Constitution goes to the states, the 14th Amendment, so, uh, this, to me, that it is a state thing. If it's regulated by the federal government, then the federal government might as well regulate a whole bunch of other things that it should not like education. Right, and I think that when the federal government regulates things, it, um, sometimes can do a lot of harm. This is an issue that many people are very passionate about. I empathize with people who go through abortions, there is a ton of evidence on the negative outcomes of abortions for the people who go through them. So I, I think that, um, but I also think that this is one of those distraction type of argument, policy arguments. Um, there's nobody who's being killed on abortion, nobody who's going in back alleys with hangers, none of that is happening. There are real consequences for abortion policy. Um, and, you know, for example, the making of someone travel to receive one, I think that that's a very difficult thing to discuss. Uh, imagine forcing someone to go through, uh, an abortion, um, or the birth, uh, as a consequence of rape? Those are all, those are all real tough things that, um, my heart tells me one thing, um, that if I were president and I did an entire abortion ban and under all circumstances, um, I think that that would be wrong for our country and our society. And I think it's better left up to the state.
All right, uh, Jevon, same question.
Yeah, I think, um, leaving it up to the states does nothing but harm, uh, people who are female, um, I think it harms them.
What is a female though?[1763.32]
Uh somebody who produces large gametes. Uh I think it I think it harms them statistically. I think would uh what I think we had a really great standard in Roe v. Wade. Roe said in the first trimester, states can't impose any law. In the second trimester, states have some leeway to propose some laws. And in the third, they can do whatever they want. I think that was a reasonable standard and we should go back to this standard. Because it was the only thing that was preventing harm, in my opinion. Uh so, yeah.
All right, we'll open this to discussion.
Yeah, I I think that the standard in Roe v. Wade was very arbitrary, like who get who decides? Like a lot of people say, oh, the.
Was arbitrary about what I just said.
Okay, well, not what you said. I mean, the law itself.
That was the standard. That was the Roe standard.
Right. And I think it's arbitrary. The standard in Roe v. Wade is i- in Roe v. Wade is arbitrary. So a lot of the people, let's say the political argument, I'm not talking about the actual act of abortion and all that stuff, but the political standard that we fight over, Roe v. Wade, uh people are like, oh, well, a man shouldn't get to decide, but it was a man who decided that, right? And how did he use it? Why did he come up with the law? In the nineteen sixties or seventies, some guy is gonna say, oh, well, this is how we're gonna do it. Three months this, three months later this, three months after that this. I mean, it's arbitrary.
Wait, but I wanna pin down, what about the Roe v. Wade standard is arbitrary?
Why did they choose trimester?
Well, because trimesters mark significant fetal development.
Okay, but why did they choose it? Why did they choose the second or the third or what happened this?
Second trimester, we're gonna see we're gonna see an increased marked development.
So here's where I'm getting at. So if the if the state, if the state is to decide what can happen, what is the state's responsibility for choosing what it can govern?
But who gets to decide? Who gets to decide at the at the state level? Cause some states aren't even let Texas didn't won't even put it on the ballot.
This is the standard. This is why the standard is confusing, right? If the the standard itself is arbitrary because the fetal development has nothing to do with the level of responsibility the state has in governing abortion.
Oh, I disagree. I disagree heavily.
Right, okay, but I mean, but I don't. That's my opinion. So that to me, the state is not, why would the state as opposed to the federal government? All of that is arbitrary. The point is whoever makes this decision, it has nothing to do with fetal development. It has everything to do with the community that decides or that person, right? In your in your respect, you think that the person that's having the abortion should have the total control and decision-making authority, right? But that has nothing to do with fetal development. It has everything to do with somebody's right to have an abortion.
My position fully has everything to do with with fetal development. My position is that if you're not, if the fetus is not sentient, I don't care if it dies. If it's sentient, then I think we should, which would put us into the Roe v. Wade restrictions. First trimester.
So at what point is it sentient?
Twenty-four weeks.
Okay, so and what happens at twenty-four weeks?
Uh there's a long list of science things. Do you want me to get into it?
What are the big ones?
Uh it would be neuron 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 maturity, the so the complexity of the neurons.
Meaning that they feel pain?
No, it's about the neurons in fetal development go through eight stages of maturity. They reach the eighth stage, which is the same stage ours are in around twenty-four weeks. Um it would be the mass of neurons, so they have enough neurons to adequately regulate uh certain bodily functions, which would be uh the linking of their sense organs to their like Thalma cortical connections. They would also have brainwaves that are that are um significant to positive outcomes. So their brainwaves would would measure in the same waves our brainwaves would measure when we measure like your or mine.
Meaning they react to stimuli.
Um they experience, so that's that's how we dictate uh um so just the reaction to stimuli isn't experiencing anything, but see the experience would be if that reaction is connected to the brain.
Well, if it is, if it's in brainwave, right? It is if it's if they're if they're conscious of it, is the point. If they're not conscious of it.
No, you don't have to be conscious of an experience for the experience to have happened.
Right, it can be a physical, right? And I'm talking about actual there there's a thought going on. I'm trying to not be scientific about this for the sake of the people that are watching, right? Because that's really what they care about. They don't care about what the scientific phrasing is. What they care about is what's the experience that's going on in the mind of that child? Can they experience pain?
Not for twenty-four weeks.
Right, okay, so that's one thing that people really care about. Right?
Prior to twenty-four weeks, the the nociceptors under the skin aren't linked in a way that that pain can be experienced.
Okay, so I think that that's what people care about, right? That's really and then there's people that are religious and what they care about is a different marker.
But if we're gonna talk about like them being religious, I like you can be religious and care, but at that point, you can't then say, well, because I'm religious and care, everybody has to care the same way I do.
I I agree. I agree.
Which is what states like Texas are doing.
Okay, I I mean, I agree with that statement. The fact that somebody cares about it based on religious thoughts is not what drives the policy, right? What drives the policy, this is and that's what this is. And I and it's what I don't like. I don't, we're having a policy discussion right now. And I actually like the discussion. I like the fact that you know, right? And the the and I like the fact that you have something that is not like, I'm gonna be a complete loon and I'm gonna say you should be able to abort a child five minutes after it's come to term and been passed, right? That's a ridiculous statement.
Well, nobody has that statement because you can't abort something that's born.
You understand? It's a figurative statement.
No, I know. I'm just I I just like to be clarified.
Okay, so we can't commit infanticide uh in the process looped in with abortion, right? So and that policy exists in the United States right now.
It doesn't actually. In all these states where you have like this infanticide policy.
In Minnesota, in Minnesota.
No, all it is is that the doctors are not obligated to provide life.
They're not all exactly. So you can allow.
Saving method. It would be up to the parents' discretion.
I agree. Yes, I agree. So if. Let's let's recap that. Recap the entire law. You know it. I don't wanna interrupt you. Go ahead and rephrase the law.
If a fetus is born, the law is specifically if a fetus is born and it is not viable, so it will not survive.
It doesn't, it's it's not, it's not dependent on whether it's viable.
It is.
No, it's not. It's not dependent. The law's not dependent on whether.
The life-saving measure. That's the whole point of life-saving measure. You don't have to perform life-saving measures if it's viable. Right? So what it is, is it's saying if this fetus is viable, or I'm sorry, if the fetus is not viable, doctors are not obligated to perform life-saving measures unless the parents want to to in most cases say goodbye, right? Uh typically, it will be, we 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 save it and then they'll say goodbye and then the fetus will will pass.
Okay, so you're saying that in Minnesota, the law says that if the fetus could survive with life-saving measures, there the law does not allow them to not provide care.
But it won't survive because it's not viable.
No baby will survive out of the womb without life-saving care. Every baby requires life-saving care.
That's not true. What do you think life-saving care is?
Any care. You you if a baby's if a baby's born.
We're arguing with different different meanings of these words. When I say life-saving care and when we're looking at like the way doctors are handling this.
You're talking about CPR.
CPR is one of it, whether we take it to the NICU.
What I'm saying is that what I'm saying is that you have to you have to provide life, every any care. A baby needs care when it's born, right? And what we're saying, to generalize the statement, to make it simple to digest, we're talking about leaving a baby that is alive on a table to die.
That will not survive. That's an invi- a non-viable baby.
It's on a baby, it's on a table, you let it die on its own naturally.
Yes, because vi- viable means it will not be able to maintain homeostasis on its own. It will not be able to to uh adequately.
So how long, how long it, how long does it take to determine that?
To determine viability?
Yeah, so let's say that the baby's born. So let's say, how long can a baby be left alive on a table with no care?
To determine viability?
Not to determine viability, to determine whether or not you can provide it care or not.
That's not how they determine that. They're gonna look at like whether this lungs are strong enough.
Let's say the lungs are not strong enough. Let's say that the lungs, that the capacity of the lungs will only allow that baby to survive fifteen minutes out of the womb.
Okay, so then it's up to the parents whether the doctors perform life-saving methods.
So it can be on a table for fifteen minutes and die naturally from suffocation.
Yeah.
Okay.
It's lungs are not strong enough to survive.
Okay, agreed. Okay, understood. My point is, I think that the vast majority of Americans are horrified by that circumstance, right? Because this is not a piece of meat at that point. We can't argue set whether it has sentient thoughts. We can't argue whether this baby has warmth or whether it's feeling pain or cold of the table, right? Or whether that baby is crying out of pure physical reaction to the environment of cold.
Yes, but what do you want them to do? They can't give it new lungs.
I I mean, but that's not the point. The point is that we talk about compassion.
So what should the doctors be obligated to do?
So we're we when we talk about abortion, right? The number one thing that we should all agree upon is that number one, it's a heinous act.
Disagree.
Okay, but it it's an it's a very ugly thing.
I don't I don't agree. I think it's a very amoral action.
Okay. I think that most people understand that abortion, under any circumstance, especially after those twenty-four weeks, is a really terrible thing, an outcome for both the mother and the child.
And that's why ninety-six percent of abortions happen before then. And that's what Roe v. Wade established. Roe v. Wade established that after twenty-four weeks, which is the third trimester, states can bar abortion. They said you have full, full legal right to do so. But the right uh lost their minds at this for some reason, back when Roe v. Wade was passed. I think it's because they don't didn't understand how the law actually, how Roe v. Wade actually was implemented.
You're, I think that it's not fair who lost their actual mind in this situation. The people that lost their mind are the people that can't understand that this is a pretty terrible experience for everyone involved. And and most people, even the people would agree, except for some crazy people, that this is even having an abortion, this is this was a really a horrible experience.
But then why are we letting states completely make that decision for patients? We're allowing, this is already a tough decision. And we're allowing states like Texas that have zero exceptions, not for rape, not for incest, not for anything. Texas has zero exceptions. Texas will not put abortion on the ballot, even though sixty percent of Texans want to put abortion in their uh legislature at the state level. They won't do it. And Texas had trigger laws. So the people never got a chance to vote on this, right? And this is Texas is the only state to do this. So it seems like it's not about giving it to the states. Giving it to the states, in my opinion, would be putting it on the ballot like we've done here in Florida. Let the people decide and then let the people decide the what how they wanna do it. Let the people decide the week-long length if we're not gonna go back to Roe. But that's not what people are doing. Because you have stray governors like Abbott who will not let the people decide.
Well, I mean, we live in Florida. That's not our cir- circumstance here. And it we have it on the ballot right now. It's gonna come up. Chances are Amendment Three passes, right? And if it pa- I think it's a shame because I think that number one, you should never be able to pass a law that is not honest or truthful with the people of the state. I think that the the lobbyist involved that write these amendments do it in a way that confuses people. They do it in a way that people don't really understand what they're voting. And Amendment Three does more harm than good, in my opinion.
Is it Amendment Three or Four?
Four, four, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I just wanna make sure so people know.
Three is the weed. Three is the weed. Sorry about that. Yeah.
Vote yes on Amendment Three.
How do you feel, John, about Amendment Three?
I don't even smoke.
I I'm a no on Amendment Three and and here's why. I'm not opposed to smoking weed. I I don't smoke weed. I'm not saying that I never have. I have. Um but I I I think that legal weed in the in the way that Amendment Three describes it benefits huge corporations who are involved in the weed business. I know them, okay? If it was a law that allowed people to grow weed in their house and it not be criminalized and you can you can grow it in your backyard and you can smoke it in your backyard, I'd probably vote for it. But one, which makes a corporation rich, eh they sell it to you as if it's go, oh, this is gonna be like lottery. So this vice is gonna pay for your kids to be educated. You haven't educated a fucking kid in Florida in I don't know how many decades and now with the lottery and now you're gonna be doing this? And I'm not saying that the lottery is bad or that they're the the agency that runs the lottery. My point is the schools are not good.
So what you're saying is the Republicans in charge of Florida haven't done a good job at education.
I'm saying that the education system throughout the United States is terrible. It's a model that is two hundred years old that is on its its last leg. No matter what you do to modify it, it can't carry over a model that is old. Our kids have no interest in being in school. They could learn more on YouTube in a week. They could learn algebra in two weeks on YouTube, but they force them to sit their asses in chairs for no reason under different, you know, regulations that they are socially and culturally non, you know, non-applicable to them, right? I mean, it it so it's it's a dead, it's a dead model. And the only reason that we do it is because people have thirty-year careers in the education system and that's why we keep it alive. And then there's lobbyists and corporations making billions and billions of money selling it to people like, here's your babysitting service and we're gonna teach your kid. I think that that's wrong. It's morally wrong.
Well, I think we found our uh two subjects for the next time you guys debate, weed and education. Um but let me give Jovan just one last word on on abortion, then we'll move to you, John, and then uh we'll do final statements.
Yeah, I think it's very clear that when we look at abortion, an abortion ban specifically, maternal mortality has gone up. Uh there are women who have to who who suffer from from incest, are uh children who suffer from incest, who are forced to carry children in some states. There are women who suffer from rape who are forced to carry children from some states. I think Roe v. Wade gave us a very good standard. It allowed states to to regulate abortion when when I believe a fetus becomes a person. And when most pe- and I I think when most people would see twenty-four weeks as a good cutoff, um I think right now, all we're doing is forcing women to suffer, so.
All right, John?
Yeah, I I I think that the suffering doesn't end with an abortion. I think it continues and prolongs that suffering. I've spoken to a lot of people about this issue. I've met people who are born as a consequence of rape and incest. They don't regret their lives. Their mothers don't regret having them. I met one person who said that she wished that she had had an abortion and that she wished that she had been aborted because she was the vic- she was the byproduct of a rape. And um and when I talked to her a little bit more, I quickly realized that this was a person who was dealing with tremendously emotional pressure and an illness. And that's why that was the coming. It wasn't because she was uh a product of incest or anything else. So this is this is a horrendous situation. Killing babies, killing the natural process of birth is really ugly. It permanently scars women. Um I I pray for them all. My opinion, I'm a hundred percent pro-life. You know, I I but at the same time, I do understand the constitutional duty to not impose my religious beliefs on other people. So this is a complex one. I am a I'm definitely a no on Four. I think Four is a a very manipulative way to pass legislation.
Thank you, John.
And uh yeah, and that's all.
Thank you. Thank you. All right, we're gonna uh move on to final statements. Uh Jovan, I'm gonna give you two minutes and then I'll give John two minutes.
Yeah, I think when it comes to the way this country is right now, when it comes to the dichotomy between the left and the right, I think it's very clear that there is a a group of people. I won't say John, um but there's a group of people on one side, specifically the right, who are just allergic to to facts. I think it every I as I feel like I showed evident in here, uh it's a lot of buzzwords. It's a lot of uh headlines, but there's never any real diving into like the actual factual matters of like what's happening throughout the country. I think we have a group of people that wanna see the constitution completely destroyed. Donald Trump included, who's claimed time and time again, he wants to terminate the constitution. And that you have a group of people that wanna throw people in jail for protesting. And that you have a group of people that want to limit the rights and freedoms of so many Americans. I I think it's very clear that this is all in an effort to to put people in line, in my opinion. So, yeah, I just I I don't view this restricting of freedom coming from the right that, in my opinion, borders on authoritarianism and borders on fascism. I think that this is just uh what we see every time we let somebody like Trump rise into like major public figure status. So in my opinion, uh I feel like today I've shown relevant, like in each topic, uh I've given enough factual information for Americans to hopefully make an informed decision in November, uh if you haven't already made that informed decision. And I will most likely be voting for Kamala, but at the end of the day, I still don't like her.
All right, thanks, Jovan. John, two minutes.
Yeah, um so I mean, I think that we have a a left today which has left any sense of reality. We talk about there, I I get your need for the facts and the material and I didn't come prepared with studies and all that to say that, whatever. I came to talk to the American people about what they're feeling on the inside and they feel it. The the truth is something that no one can escape, right? And you have people like John Kerry saying that the First Amendment is a problem. The first? Really? You gotta jump all the way to the First Amendment to say that's a problem? And then you have an administration with Kamala Harris and Biden actually bullying media companies into silence. That's a violation of our First Amendment. They've already shown their true colors. They're terrible with the, at the bottom line is that they're horrendous with the economy. They're terrible at the border. They're terrible with national security. We are right now trying to recruit soldiers for the army with drag queens. It's an absolute shitshow and and that they they've shown that this is a responsibility that's beyond the left because the left has lost any sense, any semblance of reality or what is true, including which bathroom to use. That's not who can lead a country. That's not who can take care of a family. At the end of the day, you can have silly teenagers playing stupid games, but we want adults managing the household. And that's what we need with Trump. Uh I'm not offended by his tweets or anything. I think he's hilarious. He's a naturally funny guy. At the end of the day, he has great instincts. Everything he does turns to gold. And that's who I would rather trust over somebody who has to lie about how they feel or even change their accent to get people to like them. Uh true leaders don't need to do that. And I think that we've we've talked enough and the American people really know. But I do appreciate this. I appreciate the you your invitation. You're you're a great guy. This is a ton of fun to do to to talk about these things. The people in our country need to be hearing real voices from real people, not the MSM, uh not these politicians. And certainly, our government should not be controlled by lobbyists and that's not who we should be listening to. We need to be listening to the American people and allow them to decide. And that's who has the real value here. We need to be listening to the American people and allow them to decide. And, and that's who has the real value here.